All righty, back to business. Councilwoman Shadid has an item that is listed under Items from Council, under Item 10, and has requested that we consider moving this item forward. Would that be okay with the rest of the council? All righty, Councilman, do you want to go ahead and make some comments, opening comments? We'll go get Kenny. We also do have a citizen to be heard, and I don't know at what point, Councilman, you'd like to do that.
Okay, I'll just briefly. This resolution would add just to the laundry list of items that cannot be considered in hiring, filing, or retention of employees. Sexual orientation, in terms of why we would have such a resolution. Number one, we're talking about a large group of people in Oklahoma. There are some estimated 360,000 gay and lesbian Oklahomans, estimated 30,000 to 60,000 gay and lesbian in the Oklahoma City metro area. So it's a large number of people. Discrimination in the workplace is a real issue. In 2001, the Williams Institute at the UCLA School of Law reports that discrimination based on sexual orientation is basically equal to those of race and gender, at about 4.7 per 10,000 for sexual orientation, as compared to discrimination based on gender at 5.4 and race at 6.5. And it's not just homosexual employees reporting. It's if you ask heterosexual employees, how many times have you witnessed discrimination against homosexual employees? About 12 to 30 percent of heterosexual workers will say, "I've seen this independently." Although studies show that about nine out of 10 Americans believe that there are protections for homosexual workers, and the federal law, it's still legal, federal and state law, is still legal to fire someone for being gay or transgender. So there is no protection. So what you've seen across the country is basically an avalanche of municipalities taking upon themselves to have, to add this language into their anti-discrimination personnel policies. Basically, every large city in America, there's some 170 municipalities that have done it so far. There are nine other cities in Oklahoma that have voted to offer some form of protection to LGBT Oklahomans. Perry, Noble, Chickasha, Muskogee, all include sexual orientation in their harassment policy. Tulsa, which, this is basically a carbon copy in terms of the resolution, voted in June of 2010 to do the same. Tulsa, McAllister, Dennis City, Miami, and Bonita include sexual orientation in their nondiscrimination policies. Oklahoma City Public Schools includes sexual discrimination in its nondiscrimination policies. I think the, it's not just municipalities, it's business. And I think when you, I think what large businesses across America are also recognizing is that this is good business policy. The 2011 report of the Human Rights Campaign that found that 337 large companies now are including language in their nondiscrimination policies on sexual orientation, which covers about 8.3 million full-time U.S. workers. The reason, again, is that it's good business. When the Williams Institute was very clear that lesbian and gay workers who've been able to come out with work without fear of discrimination show lower levels of anxiety, less conflict between work and personal life, greater job satisfaction, more sharing of employers' goals, higher levels of satisfaction with their coworkers, more self-esteem, and better physical health. Productivity increases, and everybody, basically, is happier at work. So in addition to the 170 municipalities that have done this so far, the more and more large businesses, a tremendous number of large businesses are doing so. Arguments, concerns about doing a resolution, number one would be that it's divisive, that having this would be divisive, and that maybe the personnel, that it should be done quietly by Personnel Department and just added. I think that direction from council is needed. This was last revised in 2005, and this language wasn't included. I think that perception is reality. I think you heard in today's Oklahoman, Ex-Mayor Norick indicated that the reason the Human Rights Commission was disbanded in 1996 was because of these sexual orientation issues. It took Steve Lockmire of the Oklahoman about three minutes to put out his Twitter account that, when this first came out, that the Human Rights Commission was disbanded in 1996 because of this. So there is a perception that people, none of which were here, are here now, in decades past, that the council has been hostile to these groups. And so I think it certainly can't be quantified, but there's been a sense over the years that conventions need to be held in cities such as Tulsa, or basically all the surrounding cities around us, Albuquerque, Tulsa, Austin, et cetera, have this kind of language. And I think it has cost us in terms of conventions. And so in terms of why to have a public resolution, I think that without the public resolution, without the discussion, you don't get the benefit of healing. I think that this resolution goes a long way towards, instead of being divisive, healing some of the wounds of the past. I think that there's a concern about how, you know, what does the term "more sexual orientation" mean, and what's included in that. I don't think that that needs to be strictly defined, just as we currently don't allow discrimination based on religion, but we don't go into a laundry list of Satanism, or, I mean, we don't define certain religions, we just say religion. And likewise, we're just saying sexual orientation. And that's homosexual or heterosexual. Heterosexuals wouldn't be able to be discriminated against either. There is a question of whether this would extend to health insurance benefits, and I think that it does not. That was the conclusion of Tulsa, that is, I think that the conclusion of municipalities. And I think this has come up in the 170 municipalities that have added it to their anti-discrimination policies, and I think it's come up in the more than 337 large companies that have added it to their anti-discrimination. Saying that you're not going to discriminate based on sexual orientation in hiring and firing does not obligate you in any way to extending same-sex health insurance benefits. The mechanism, as I understand it, would not be Title VII, because it's not included in Title VII, but it would simply go up the chain of city. Jim Couch would have the final say, and then if somebody wanted to file a claim, that could be done in state court, I assume, just as political affiliation is not covered under Title VII. But we've made it a city policy that we will not discriminate based on political affiliation. Another, a final sticking point is transgender. Transgender employees certainly have a much higher rate of discrimination, some would say in the order of 90 percent. That's more confusing legally, and I think, but an argument would be that it's already covered under existing laws prohibiting employment based on gender, that the city already mentions gender by name, and that that would include that. I do believe that we have some who also would like to speak to this.
We do, we have three citizens who've signed up to speak, so perhaps this is a good time to do that. Scott Hamilton. And as we have three folks, if I could ask you to please try to keep your comments to about three minutes, and if those comments could bring new information to us and not be repetitive, that would be helpful. And Scott, would you please give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Scott J. Hamilton. My address is 2346 Northwest 11th Street in Oklahoma City. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you for a moment this morning. As Executive Director of Cimarron Alliance, I represent the interests and the needs of 365,000 gay Oklahomans, of those, about 60,000 of them live here in Oklahoma City. As we began the proceedings this morning, the rabbi in his prayer asked for vision. This resolution speaks to vision, not only the immediate need of people here in Oklahoma City now, but it speaks to where we hope to go as a city, and that includes treating all people fairly. In addition to my role with Cimarron, I am also the Associate Pastor of an open and affirming congregation here in Oklahoma City, and we believe that discrimination against any group is inherently wrong, and it goes against biblical teachings. I want to move this, though, beyond a philosophical discussion or one of religious nature or morality. Instead, I want us to think for this moment about what it means to purposely exclude a group of persons from being protected. It's not the way that our state runs, it's not the history of Oklahoma City, but rather we are a city that offers opportunities to all people to do so equally and fairly. This one minor change does not in any way take away anyone's rights, but rather it adds protection to a group of people who, right now, are purposely excluded from protection. Beyond the individual, though, when we consider this very simple language and the impact that it has on our economy, on our tourism, on our convention business, and perhaps most sadly of all is the tremendous drain of young talent, new talent emerging into the workplace who decide to leave a place like Oklahoma City because of discrimination. And while this change affects only city employees, it does send a much greater message that there is hope here for equality for all citizens, that there is a place for everyone to work, to contribute, to grow. I would encourage you to support this as a matter of equality. When a visitor walks into this very building, one of the very first things that he or she sees is a great sign headlined "equality" on the first floor. There it describes how there was a time in Oklahoma City's history where equality was not true. I can only hope that this morning you will see fit to make sure that equality is just that, all people treated equally and fairly under the law. We owe it to our citizens today, but we owe it to our future. Today, more and more people are considering things just like this when they plan a convention or a tour. And so the economic impact potentially is very strong. The individual impact has no estimation of its importance. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Rena Gueye. And Rena, could you please give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Rena Gueye. The last name is spelled G-U-A-Y. I live at 943 Northeast 16th Street. I'm in Mr. Kelly's ward. I moved to, well, first of all, I just want to thank Dr. Shadid for bringing this before the city council. It's more than time to deal with this issue, and I really appreciate him doing that. I moved to Oklahoma in 2003. I moved here from Florida, and I lived in the Tampa Bay area, a couple of different municipalities in there, and I moved to Florida in 1980. And during the period of time I was in Florida, many of those municipalities dealt with this issue, and not always the first time, but they did over a 10-year period or so, adopt this policy for their cities. And one of them was even a very small little hamlet called Gulfport. And I just feel like, my goodness, if Gulfport could do it before 2000, I don't know the exact year, but I know for sure it was before 2000, then Oklahoma City, which is striving to be, you know, a top-tier city and compete for large businesses coming here, big corporations, that they themselves have policies for their employees that cover sexual orientation and aren't willing to forfeit that policy for other, you know, for their current employees and future employees, then certainly Oklahoma City can do that now. I'd also want to say that, echo what other people have said, that this is good for business, and it's, another reason it's good for business is that if you've ever had something about yourself that you've had to hide, you know that it is not good for your health, it's not good for your morale, and it's not good for your community and your social and business dealings. So this is a simple thing that will make Oklahoma City better for everybody in many ways, so thank you very much.
Rena, thank you very much for coming down. And James, same instructions, name and address for the record, three minutes, please.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much. My name is James Fenimore Cooper. I live on 2804 North Robinson, Apartment 8. Thank you so much, everyone, for allowing me these brief moments to speak. I'm actually in Ed's district. Thank you so much for introducing this, and thank you to everyone who spoke and for everyone for being here today. I'll try and make this very brief. Earlier this year, I finished grad school at Oklahoma State University. I did my undergrad at the University of Oklahoma. I moved to the city last year. I'm from Midwest City, however, born and raised. And when I started working on a research project post-grad school this summer on the history of this city's gay and lesbian community, one of the things that I came across was in the '70s when one of our state legislators actually introduced where, if you were a teacher, you could be fired just for being gay. Moreover, if you were someone who was straight, had a family, had a girlfriend, pregnant, these sorts of things, you too could be fired if you spoke up and spoke positively about this thing called the homosexual. This was a bill introduced here and fought. I'm a teacher. I spent the last 10 years through student loans, working part-time jobs, waiting tables, working at video stores, just so I could be a teacher, just so I could teach people how to fix punctuation mistakes, how to study film, how to study their pop culture. When I was finishing grad school, I sat in an office, if anyone's ever been in grad school, you know that you share an office with about 20 to 100 other people, and everyone in those offices spoke of who they were dating, who they were in love with, who they were going to the movies with that night. Imagine what would happen if you couldn't speak openly about that. As Rena just said, if this was something that you had to hide from people that are supposed to be your friends, your colleagues, the people you're supposed to share the joys of your work, the passion of your career with. I know that university is not a city job, but I have seen universities like OSU step forward and say, "Nondiscrimination is what we must do." It would send a resounding message in our history books if we, as a city, were to step up and say integrity matters, privacy matters, you're a human being and you matter. I know this because I've lived it. I'm an Oklahoman. I know this because after researching this history piece, I know what discrimination looks like. It's been written. We didn't do it. We're the products of that history, but we don't have to be its victims. And I hope that the next person who comes along after myself and has to do this sort of research project will be able to look at this day and say, "Oh, my goodness, look what Oklahoma City did." Thank you.
Thank you, James, very much. All righty, council, comments? Ready to vote? Or do we have a motion? Mary?
I'd like to make a few comments, and I could preface it by saying that Ed knows what I'm going to say, because Ed and I had very good conversation over the weekend about this. Since this came up, I was not up to speed, and I'm still not up to speed. I don't know where the rest of you, council, are on this particular issue, but there are a couple of things that I've come across that lend me to have a caution about moving forward on this at this time. The first one, I'm going to take a little more than three minutes if I could.
You're welcome.
I'll warn you ahead of time. The first thing is that this is not a new thing in employment and discrimination in our country. There's been going on since 1994, a debate in the Congress about the Employment Nondiscrimination Act, the code name ENDA. That has never passed. It came within one vote a number of years ago. It still is not law, so everybody who says there is no protection for the LGBT group and federal law is 100% correct. I missed that on the quiz in talking with Ed, because I thought it was covered. But it has not been, and it has not passed, and there's an effort now to again pass it. Representative Barney Frank has introduced legislation into the House, and a gentleman named Markway has introduced legislation into the Senate to try to pass this. The House and Senate have gone through this a number of times, iterations since 1994, every Congress except one, and has never passed. That gives me a certain caution. The reference from my material, by the way, it can be found on the Internet in Wikipedia, if I can pronounce that right, and I'm looking at it right now as I go through here. The, it's interesting, I switched over then to look at what's going on in the state of Oklahoma. And I don't know if you realize or not, but within the last three months, the state of Oklahoma has passed a new Employment Nondiscrimination Act, and the wording on that of the protected groups, if we can use that correctly, if that's a correct interpretation, the wording on that specifically is identical to the wording of our policy right now. So that has just been passed by the state of Oklahoma and signed by Governor Fallon. So there is no protection for this group under state law, but their comments or their wording is exactly as our wording is right now. So that gives me a little concern about changing it when the state has gone through this and seen that there is no need to change it. The lady who came up and spoke for the cities, Florida is in exactly the same position as of the last updating of Wikipedia, which goes back to, I believe, April of this year, so it might have changed since then. But in Florida, they have the same situation as we have right here. It's very interesting, the people, several people have talked about tourism. The city of Orlando, as of April of this year, had no change in their, they are compatible with Florida state law, just as we are compatible with Oklahoma state law. So the, both sides of this issue talk about, this is good for business, and this is good for tourism, and both sides, the Williams Institute is a very research-oriented outfit out of UCLA, they take the approach that it is good for, to have the Dr. Shadid's amendment, if you will, put in. There are other sides, and other research that says it's not good. So you've got two sides to this issue going on as far as that is concerned. Going on, one of the things, there are two pieces to this issue. The LGBT, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender is kind of the acronym code name. Sexual orientation is involved in three of those, the transgender is another, and gender. So there are two pieces to this puzzle which further complicate the issue, and I'm not enough of an expert to know exactly how this wording right here that the Dr. Shadid has proposed plays into those four components. So that gives me a caution. The, there's a considerable amount of research on who earns the most money, and one side, the side in favor of Dr. Shadid's approach, says that the LGBT group is financially disadvantaged. The opponents for this say, "Wait a minute, our research shows that this body of people actually earns more money than the straight people," if we can use that term just for a minute. So that, again, gives me concern on here. So as we go through, as we look at the different states, there are a number of states like Oklahoma which do not have, do not speak to state law on this particular issue, and there are some who have protection for the sexual part of it, some have protection for both sexual and transgender, some have just protection for public employees, some have protection for just non-public employees. So the issue, to me, is a very complex issue, and therefore, as I've gone through just the research in the last three days on this, I'm not really prepared to make an intelligent vote, and so I would like, can I make an amendment, an offer to defer?
Yes, there's no motion.
Okay. I would like a motion to defer and direct staff to get us additional information and to bring it back to us before we vote this in its finality. So my motion is to defer it, and I don't know how long, Jim, would be a reasonable time. I would think, from the complexity I've seen, I would go for a 30-day defer. So that's my motion, and if there's a second, fine, if not...
Is there a second?
Yes, if I can also talk.
I believe that follows the rules.
I appreciate Councilman Shadid bringing this resolution forward. I think it's important, and I think everybody deserves respect, and hiring decisions should be made based upon the ability to perform a job, as well as promotion, retention, those types of decisions. It's a very important decision, it's a very sensitive issue, and again, I respect and appreciate Councilman Shadid bringing this forward. My concern with it, and it's not exactly like Councilman McAtee's concern, but I would have had a preference if this had came through personnel. Ms. Berry and her staff, who heads up our Personnel or HR division, they're very professional. Every time I've had any contact with them, they are very, again, professional, very well-qualified, certainly no issues related to personnel matters, and this is a personnel matter, it should come out of the Personnel Department. If it was a traffic issue we were talking about, I'd want to see it coming out of the Traffic Division. If it was an accounting issue, I'd seek Mr. Williamson's input on the matter, and we'd want a recommendation from him. So I will agree, or I second, Councilman McAtee's proposal to defer it, but I'd like to take that a step further and have the Personnel Department make a recommendation to us, because they'll look at all matters, they'll seek the city attorney's advice on this, and I would prefer it coming from the Personnel Division as a recommendation. Yes or no? Whatever their recommendation is, we're not bound by it, but it at least gives me confidence that they've looked at it and they feel like it's in the best interest of the city, and that's what I'm concerned about, what is in the best interest of the city of Oklahoma City. And they're the most appropriate group to provide a recommendation at this point in time, and we can give it as much attention as we want to, we can spend weeks talking about it, I'm not opposed to that, but I do request that the Personnel Department, Ms. Berry and her staff, provide us a recommendation, if that's possible to include in the amendment. I'm sorry, I don't know the details as to whether or not that would be. And so, again, I'm supportive of the concept, but I think it's just appropriate that we utilize the resources that we have at our disposal, and that would include our Personnel Department, and they do a terrific job. One final comment, the thing I tell people as far as what surprises me the most since being elected to the city council, and I hope this comes out in the manner that I intended to be, is the professionalism, the dedication of all the employees of the city of Oklahoma City that I've encountered, and to exclude them from this process just doesn't make sense. It's an important issue, we need to utilize their expertise in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mary, you made a motion, and it's been...
I did.
Before amendment?
Yeah, when I said staff, I should have been more specific. I would think that legal and personnel both should be involved in that, because there are some legal, possible legal ramifications from whatever recommendation the personnel brings.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to defer for four weeks and to refer this back to staff and ask that both the Personnel Department and legal review for, and make a recommendation to us. Is that correct? We ready to vote?
Right.
Skip? Okay.
Yes. And I wasn't going to say anything, but I think I would be less of an individual to sit here on this council and have heard the words that has been spoken, and as profound as they may be, and with all the respect of the First Amendment rights to those individuals, to some degree, I have to say that discrimination has been a very, very ugly... To some degree, I have to say that discrimination has been a very, very ugly word in America for a long period of time. And as we all sit here today, of all the accomplishments that has been made, we still know that in this world, there are indifferences that are shown to individuals because of who they are and what they are, be it based on their race, creed, color, national origin, or religion, or gender. It still exists. But with that, it's if that we have not made some major accomplishments to cure those eels. And I, for one, is a true product of some of that, from my family, for generations and generations. For me, as I sit here today, there are still issues of the same sort that I have to battle with. But I'm not going around blaming others for it. The fortitude of me as an individual and the respect of the Constitution that we have in America and all the amendments to the Constitution has been the leverage that we have all had to use to cure those eels, those issues. And so every court in the United States of America, you will find, from the state district courts to the federal courts to the United States Supreme Court, various opinions and decisions as it has really addressed these particular issues. The problem I have here is, is that out of all of those changes, they were only made because there were causes and there were issues that was brought to the forefront. The Civil Rights Movement was only because of the treatment of people by their color and the accomplishments of the Civil Rights Act and the Supreme Court case of Brown versus Board of Education was only because people was treated in a cruel and unusual and, 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 and dehumanizing way. And because of that, those individuals took their positions as lawyers. Those individuals who sat as, as judges had to make decisions based upon the Constitution as they interpreted in the amendments to the Constitution. But there was issues that they had before then. My problem with this is, is that, and I've asked on several occasions, how many times have we had to address this issue with the city and the city's personnel policy as it relates to discriminating against individuals based upon their sexual orientation? Then the question is, what is the definition of sexual orientation? How many people can come and say, "This is my sexual orientation"? So where is the definition of sexual orientation is a perplexing question that continues to be asked, and there's no answer for it. And so we hear the argument that this is what had been done in other cities and other municipalities and in other states. And I'm not one to just fall for what somebody say was done in another city, another municipality, another state, because you don't know the facts and you don't know the circumstances, you don't know the conditions that existed there. But if we're gonna talk about Oklahoma City, let's talk about what really exists in Oklahoma City. Is it an issue in Oklahoma City? Have we had it come before this council with empirical data that has stated that because of these individuals or because of the sexual orientation issue, that some people are being denied employment, that some people are being treated in a hostile environment, in a hostile way? All I ask for was, can we at least be able to make decisions as it relates to changing issues, as it pertains to life issues, with some information that you can stand on? The state legislature takes time to investigate, they have committees, they have studies, before they just rapidly throw something out and say, "We're gonna pass this," because of what? I think every policy that we, as a council, every policy that the, that the Personnel Department, every policy that legal, I think all of those issues have to be based upon some foundation of an issue that exists in order to make a change, to correct that problem. And I would ask that, concurring with, with Councilman McAtee, that we take respect of the fact that we have a, a legal department, that we have a Personnel Department, that this Personnel Policy wasn't drafted by the eight people that sit on this council, the Personnel Policy was drafted by the staff that the city manager has put together to address these very issues. And I would defer to that. I think that's where it should begin and that's where it should end. And if we're in a situation where it becomes a legal matter, then you have those individuals who are the experts in each one of their departments to address that issue. We, as councilmen, we can say that we experts in, in certain policies, based upon our, our background, based upon what we did before we came to the council, based upon what we do now. But God forbid, we are not the experts in labor law. And I would just like to say that, you know, there's nobody on this council, I don't think, would say one thing about anybody's sexual belief, their desires, their orientation, if you call it, their gender, their religion, in any shape, form, or fashion. And to some degree, it makes it look like that this was put here and brought to us to say that we've been doing something wrong, that we've been sinful against a class of people, that we've discriminated against a class of people, and I haven't seen any information to prove that. And I just, you know, maybe it's my training, maybe in law they teach you, "You don't go to court unless you have something to stand on and you have an issue that you can argue and you have some law to support it." Maybe that's just my training, but I think it's the fair way of treating any type of issue as it relates to these type of matters.
Skip. All righty, we have a motion?
Well, can I just address that real quick? I, the, the idea that we would not address an issue because we don't know the incidence or the empirical data, uh, I, I'm, I'm not understanding that. We, we have gone out of our way to say we are not gonna hire and fire based on political affiliation. We cannot hire and fire because somebody's a member of the Communist Party. What is the incidence of, of claims by, by, uh, city employees based on Communist, being part of the Communist Party, or the Tea Party, or, or any other political affiliation? That's just city policy, and we didn't do it based on empirical data. Second, I think what, i- in a way, it's blaming the victim. I mean, if you don't have a policy that doesn't allow for discrimination of sexual orientation, then why would anybody come forward and, and complain about being discriminated based on sexual orientation? So I, uh, I, I think in other municipalities, you, you, you have the policy and then people start coming forward. You're not gonna have the incidence, you're not gonna know what the true incidence is or what the empirical data is until after you set the policy. Um, the, uh, the last time, you know, we relied on the Personnel Department in two thousand and five, they didn't include this language. I, I don't think it's, it's the, I don't think it's city staff's responsibility to set policy, and, and Jim, you could, I mean, David, David seems to be saying we should have city staff chime in and make policy. Well, we're adding two words to a laundry list, that, that's all we're doing, two words, sexual orientation. It's city council that sets policy, not city staff. But there, I, I feel like we're looking for a reason to vote against it without, to study it to death. This has been done by a hundred and seventy cities, three hundred and thirty-seven large companies. With all due respect to Kenny, who I think is brilliant and does a great job, I don't think he's gonna find legal challenges that the other hundred and seventy cities haven't. I don't think in this month we're going to discover, uh, new recommendations by city staff that haven't been, uh, that, that would change just adding two words. I, I have spoken with Diana Berry, I have spoken with the Personnel Department, they seem to be in favor of this. I think a month later, they say, "Yeah, we don't wanna discriminate based on sexual orientation," and we're right back here with the exact same resolution. Uh, it's adding two words. Uh, it's, it's, it's not that complex, and, uh, I'm not sure what studying it over, over the next month does, but in any case, it's not city staff's, uh, responsibility to set policy, that's our responsibility.
Councilman, from a procedural standpoint, I believe we have a motion on the table to defer, and we have a second on that motion, so I think we need to vote on that matter. All ready to take your votes to defer? Cast your votes, and it passes on a vote of five to three. So matter's deferred for four weeks.
What was the date of the deferral, please?
November twenty-second.
Uh, could it be deferred a couple weeks further? I don't, I don't, this is just a personal thing, and I understand that personal schedules don't have, uh, determinative value up here, but I will not be here on the twenty-second, and I would like very much to vote in favor of this resolution, if indeed it comes back in, in the current form.
Okay.
I'd also like to request that the mayor be here. I'd like to request that all nine city councillors and the mayor be here for the vote.
I think it's a little complicated to, to make that happen today.
Can we look, can we look at the mayor's schedule and just make sure that the mayor is here?
And I, I would agree with Pat, I think that twenty-second before Thanksgiving is probably a difficult day, so can we amend that motion to perhaps move it six weeks out?
You, yes, absolutely. You can, uh...
Larry, would you?
It's already passed, uh, just make a motion to reconsider the vote, and then you vote on that, then it's back before you.
Motion to reconsider the vote? Okay, so second?
I, I'd like to just share, the ma, the mayor, I spoke with the mayor yesterday...
Can I hang up? I need a second on the motion to reconsider.
Someone in the majority should make the motion to reconsider.
I second the motion to reconsider. Should I make the motion first?
You can make the motion and...
Yes, I'll second it.
And Pat can second it.
I can't second it.
Yeah, I believe you can second it.
I'll take the motion that we reconsidered, that the whole, or just the date.
Just...
Just the date.
Okay. Everybody, please cast your votes on the motion to reconsider, and that passes unanimously.
Can I, Meg, can I speak to the debate?
Yes.
I spoke with the mayor yesterday, he indicated that he would prefer, if this were to be deferred, to defer it one week, because next week he will be here. Is, is there a reason, does the council, is, is one week not sufficient to ask Personnel a recommendation and have legal do whatever you, you think legal needs to do, and reconsider this next week, when I believe the mayor would be here?
Councilman, I'm, I'm okay with that, uh, if, if staff, both Ms. Berry and Mr. Jordan believe that a week's time. Again, I'm in favor of the proposal, it's the process that I, I think we need to allow Personnel, 'cause I truly believe it's a Personnel issue, and that we should have their input and their recommendation on the matter before we vote on it.
I just think you're putting staff on the spot if you go a week, because from what I heard, what Larry requested was some research in how other cities are handling this, how other communities are handling it, what may be out there in wording. I mean, I, I heard Larry request a lot of information, and I don't believe, uh, staff can do an adequate job of that in one week. Uh, now, that's just a personal thought, but...
Let's ask him, they're right here.
I would agree that, that we give staff an adequate amount of time, and I think three weeks is an adequate amount of, four weeks is an adequate amount of time.
Uh, Diana Berry from the Personnel Department, a week or two weeks or three weeks would be fine, just whatever this council desires.
Uh, we just have confirmation from the mayor's office, Ed, that he will be at the council meeting on the fifteenth. Would that be acceptable to you?
Fifteenth of November.
Fifteenth of November? That seems like a reasonable compromise. That's three weeks away.
Why, why is it that we have to depend on when the mayor is here? We have a vice mayor.
Uh, thank you.
And I'm trying to figure out what he is, what he is to make.
I was beginning to feel a little bit badly.
I mean, we, we're running the council properly, and I, I, I just have a problem. We, we dumping our staff, I think this has been dumped, and I think that the time in reference to the request and the concerns that Councilman McAtee voiced are, are genuine and deserve an opportu, and, and the staff deserves an adequate amount of time in order to address that. And just to say, you know, "Give them a week and drop everything else you're doing just to do this," I just think it's not fair. I, I just think that we, we owe a little bit of civility, respect to the staff that we have here to, to address issues, to come back to make policy, and I think, uh, you know, the, the November the twenty-second is an adequate amount of time for them to do that.
Skip, I think a lot of people are gonna be traveling around that holiday day, um, so Diana, are you comfortable with the fifteenth?
Travel is not what we were here for, we were here to, to address issues, and so the fact that somebody may be traveling, uh, you know, the mayor's gone all the time. So how can we, how can we just sit around and say, "We're gonna wait until the mayor"? The mayor may have an emergency matter that he may, may have to leave town any day.
The fifteenth gives us...
Mayor, November fifteenth would be fine.
November fifteenth is fine with you?
Yes.
All righty. May I have a motion, then, that we defer this vote until November the fifteenth?
I still move.
Is there a second?
May I second this?
Oh, please cast your votes. Oops. Oh, sorry. And the motion passes unanimously.
And just to confirm with the city clerk, he did reconsider. Right.
Yes, we did reconsider, and we now have moved this item to November the fifteenth.